Yes. All right, we are now in open session for the Castro Valley Unified School District Meeting of the Board of Education here September 24th. We do not have any action that we took in closed session. We are now then going to go to our mission statement by Trustee Whitaker.
Thank you, President Adams. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all students, all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you very much. We will now have our public comment instructions, and those will be read by Trustee Howard.
There we go. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board's agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request-to-speak form on the table in the back or via the Google form and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented.
Thank you, Trustee Howard. All right, we are now up to number four, school report and recognitions. Our school report is from Redwood High School, and our presenter is Principal Kenneth Kahn.
Well, good evening, everyone. Dr. Resici, Assistant Superintendent Mastor, President of Board Education Anne Redwood, former teacher, Ms. Dolly Adams, and to our wonderful trustees, great to see you all this evening. You know, we have five very unique programs at Redwood, and I know that wanting to focus in the kind of narrow on one, you know, specific area, we wanted to create a presentation called Panther Pathways. You know, many students enter Redwood for a variety of different reasons. Dr. Resici and I actually just the other day while walking among campus, you know, she asked a great question like, "What students come to Redwood?" And I was like, "All students come to Redwood for different reasons," right? And we meet them where they're at. So today, we're going to talk about our Panther Pathways. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to share with you the incredible work that's happening at Redwood. Our vision of multiple routes leads to the same destination, right? We want a high school diploma and a future filled with opportunity for each of our students. Before I begin, I want to celebrate some of our staff, right? You've probably heard me say a number of times now that programs are people. This year, we welcomed Ms. Anne Van Court. She's our new academic counselor coming over from Castro Valley High School, along with, yeah, clap it up. Ms. Kat, our new administrative assistant, just recently joined us and has really hit the ground running. She couldn't be here tonight. But here in our community, we have Mr. Hoffman, our social science teacher, PE teacher, horticulture teacher, credit recovery teacher, after-school intervention teacher. Give him a round of applause. We have Ms. Rogers, our counseling and enrich classroom teacher, joined by our son, Molly. We have Ms. Carly Becerra, our English teacher, also our art and graphic design teacher. We have Ms. Noah, our school social worker who also leads our wellness program. And we have Ms. Connie Hill, our resource professional. The other team members, Ms. Jones, who teaches science in our cyber high, I'm Mr. Hasselbrock, social science and foods, Ms. Nguyen, special education and case management. I'm Ms. Natali, who teaches journalism, literature, and film, world readings, again, and Mr. Villegas, math, and is also our club basketball coach. And this team embodies what Panther Pathways is all about, meeting students where they are and helping them find success through resilience, belonging, and purpose. You know, it's been a while since we've seen each other. I think we saw each other last March, but then a few of us got together for this wonderful thing called graduation commencement ceremony over at the CFA, right? And I think each and every one of you actually is up there, so you can even be like, "Oh." So we talk about alternative routes to the same destination with the high school diploma, right? Credit recovery, acceleration, and transition opportunities. Some students have the desire to go back to Castro Valley High School. Others look to graduate early and enroll in programs like Chabot. Others see that maybe the incubating CTE programs that we have on campus, like horticulture or foods or graphic design, can help catapult them into programs like Eden ROP that then can also help them when they move into, you know, post-secondary classes. They can already start at an intermediate level rather than at the baseline. So really creating those pathways from the jump even before you leave with a high school diploma. Thinking about our graduation rates. So we've had some remarkable growth in the past three years. Redwood High School's graduation rates have risen from 79% to 92.1%, right? And we're trying to close the gap, right? Redwood High School students are achieving rates approaching CVUSD and Castro Valley High School levels, so our comprehensive school as well. And it's a story of resilience. It reflects the determination of continuation and credit recovery students who refuse to give up on their diploma in themselves, right? It's building those lasting bonds and relationships with that trusted adult or adults here on our campus. There's a community effort, right? Success made possible through our dedicated staff, our students' persistence, family support, and district partnership. The four students that you see up there are also the recipients of what we call the Keep Rising Up Award, and each of them, you know, received a monetary gift that would help to support them in their college career and, again, post-secondary pathways. You know, Trustee Howard, Ms. Saxner, her family, and community members brought this to Redwood three years ago, and it's been such an amazing opportunity for our students when they see that not only are they earning a diploma, but they feel seen in another way to say, "Hey, let's keep the party going, right? Let's keep the love of learning, right, in your path, you know, fruitful." So Panther pride, right? Each percentage point, it represents lives changed, opportunities opened, and futures So talking about student voice, belonging, and leadership at Redwood High School. At Redwood, belonging comes first. This year, we relaunched the Black Program, Building Leaders and Activists with Collective Knowledge. It provides a vital affinity space for our Black students to connect, lead, and to grow. Surely, if you go to one of our other secondary sites, you'll see tens, twenties, even hundreds of students. And in our small, very tight-knit, very intimate setting, it's that much more vital that even with eight or 10 students, that's still 10% of our student population at Redwood. Our clubs are also pathways to belonging. The basketball club, as you see, I believe we're playing Lincoln Continuation there, right? For example, has given students their first chance to play on a team, to compete with other continuation schools, and to feel a level of school pride across the East Bay. I'm going to see if maybe my colleagues will entertain me right here. I'll say, "All around the bay, I'm back to Clifton Way. We..." "Our blue is royal. We stayed true to the soil, and we..." It happened, y'all. Okay? And importantly, right, our students are using their voices. Last spring, they represented us at the district manager meeting, sharing their lived experiences through their kids through 12 Journey. They reminded us that student voice isn't just an extra, it's essential. So life skills and Panther skills, right? That's what they equate to. And when we talk about at the site and that kind of incubation of CTE, VOK Ed, college and career, earning high school diplomas, right? Panther Pathways also means preparing students with life skills that they can carry beyond high school. Our horticulture program teaches sustainability and care for the environment. Dr. Resici even saw the other day, you know, fresh fruit and vegetables being utilized, made into salsa, or a young student made apple cake they shared with the staff. She only got to smell it, she didn't get to bite, but, you know, I could tell you it was delicious. Our foods program brings nourishment, creativity, and collaboration to life. It's just a funny coincidence that Ms. Van Court met with Mr. Hasselbrock to say she would help make crepes, and there you see a student of, you see one of our students who made quite a crepe on that, in that photo. Our graphic design program fosters vision, innovation, and communication. And as I mentioned, with our partnership with Eden ROP program, and as you can see in the top right corner, one of our students in the nursing tech scrubs, right? These are continued pathways and opportunities for Redwood students to flourish. So then we can move on to other forms, right? In that community partnership, Panther Pathways to Careers and Service. Our pathways extend into the future. Events like Career Day and Armed Forces Day had brought employers and mentors and recruiters directly to our students. Panthers are exposed to diverse industries, from college to trades to military service to immediate employment, and these events strengthen ties with local businesses and partners who invest in our students' futures. They make possibilities visible and accessible, helping Panthers to step confidently into their next chapter. We want to continue with our wellness program, and as I mentioned with Ms. Noah, right? Another critical pathway is our wellness. So led by our school social worker, Ms. Noah, our wellness program supports, our wellness supports are growing stronger. We partner with Wellness Together for Counseling. We've added counseling intern from Cal State East Bay to expand access and care. For staff, we've prioritized growth in creating welcoming spaces through the welcoming inclusive equitable space workshops and trauma-informed practice training as well. For students, we've brought in leaders like Ashanti Branch and the Ever Forward Club. If you haven't seen the documentary, Taking Off the Mask, and kind of going deeper into who we are, the armor that we wear when we walk onto a campus versus our true kind of vulnerable selves, it's a very moving documentary. I mean, he comes with the team to meet with us, and this past year, we did a workshop with them for one day, but it was very clear that we needed to have a couple of advisory SCL lessons that would partner so that come April, we'll be able to have a great day-long workshop with he and his team. And Dante Clark, a poet laureate from Richmond, California, he's the feature of a documentary called Romeo is Bleeding. He comes in and does Q and As and writing workshops. These experiences affirm identity, build resilience, and remind our students that their stories matter. I mentioned a little bit about that apple cake and salsa, right? And we are starting to update our school garden, which creates stronger pathways to learning. Our outdoor learning environment is evolving. Our plantar boxes are aging, so we appreciate the Ed Fund for the financial support and collaborate, and we're working with the MLT department right now as we've already purchased some beautiful redwood so that we can build new, taller, more durable beds. This upgrade will help to make our garden more accessible, improve plant growth, increase student engagement, and hands-on outdoor learning, and the garden remains one of our strongest living classrooms. So please come by, and we'll show you what's growing, along with our students, of course. This past spring, you know, we got to model the expectation that we have of our students. A few of our team members, Ms. Becerra, Mr. Hasselbrock, myself, went down to the CCEA Conference, the California Continuation Educators Association Plus Conference, to learn about best practices in continuation education. We were among 750 other continuation alt-ed educators, and so it was great just to be in a room and space and break out sessions, learn so much about alt-ed beyond perhaps the lens of simply what happens at Redwood, right? And bring something back, again, to continue fostering our own growth and strengthening. As a result, we know that we want to make sure that we are, so this past summer, we submitted our application for the Model Continuation High School Recognition. We were approved by the initial phase, and so actually, we have a site validation team coming this October. A few of you have already received a couple of invites to come speak on our district's behalf or from a perspective of a former teacher or, you know, helping as a community partner and liaison, and so we're hoping, obviously, you know, for the best outcome possible. You know, these steps reflect our dedication to continuous improvement and our belief that Redwood deserves to be recognized among the best. I believe, do I pause for the students' public? I will pause there. I'll just share in closing, Panther Pathways is about much more than academics. It's about creating spaces where students belong, gain skills, build resilience, and see the futures they never thought possible. Our staff, our families, our partners, and most of all, our students make this work real, right? Student-centered, this is why we're all here. On behalf of Redwood High School, I thank you for believing in continuation education and for supporting our Panthers as they rise, achieve, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal Kahn. We are now going to move on to the recognitions. So we first, our first recognition is of a Redwood High School student, Crystal Sandoval Moneraz, and our presenter will be student board member Scarlett Everson. Is Crystal here? Come on up.
The governance team, the governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Crystal Sandoval Moneraz as an outstanding student. Crystal's journey from CVVA to Redwood has been one of growth and confidence. Once shy and hesitant to ask for help, Crystal has found strength in Redwood's supportive environment and the immediacy of one-on-one assistance. With encouragement from every teacher and especially Mr. Hasselbrock's welcoming foods class, Crystal has gained the confidence to speak up and share her talents. Artistic and creative, Crystal draws inspiration from digital book series like Adal Row and Dreams of Studying Art in College while also exploring her love of cooking and baking, from cheesecakes to chicken parmigiana. With her mom's steadfast support, Crystal continues to embody Panther resilience, turning challenges into opportunities. The governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Crystal Sandoval Moneraz.
If you would like to tell us who's here with you? Crystal?
Hi.
Can you speak into the mic, perhaps?
I'm here with my mom and my dad.
All right. Thank you, Mom and Dad. And the parents, if you want to just stand up for a sec so we can see you. Yeah, you too, Dad. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Sandoval Moneraz. Congratulations on that award. All righty. This would be a time, yes, this would be a time where the Board is going to have comments or questions on the presentation. So let's see. Shall we start with Trustee Whitaker or Trustee Emerson? Yes? Trustee Emerson.
I just wanted to say congratulations, and I love baking, and that's a very cool skill to be passionate about, and, yeah, just congratulations. It sounds like you have a lot going on and a lot of really cool interests.
And I'm so sorry, I guess I've been saying your name wrong. It's Everson. Everson. I'm thinking of the writer Emerson. I bet you that's happened to you before. Sorry. I'll get it right. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes, Principal Kahn and staff, it's really exciting to see you all come out. I'm sorry we haven't seen each other since the graduation, but, you know, you all know you've got something special up there at Redwood. You've got a tight-knit community, you've got, you know, each other, and, you know, what I, the graduation rate just kind of blew me away, seeing where we were at to where we are today, and, you know, that doesn't happen because it just happens, right? It's because of hard work and dedication of the staff, both CVTA and CSCA working together to support our kids the way they need it. And I really appreciate what you said about meeting kids where they're at. You know, we all face something, and, you know, our job is to take care of our kids, and it's really clear that you're doing that. So thank you so much for everything that you do. And then Scarlett, I'm so proud that you've like stretched out and like gotten, sorry, Crystal, I'm calling your name, that you've gotten out of your shell, right? It's like learning and growing and experiencing. There's just so much life out there, and I'm excited to see what you can do next.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, that graduation rate's really impressive and something I hope we can brag more about. It's great having you all as my neighbor. I'm just down the hill. If your students would ever like to work with my front yard with their horticulture skills, they're always invited to do that. But one of the things I really appreciated in my time on the Board is to learn what a continuation high school really does, and it really does transport lives by meeting students where they are. It's fulfilling that mission that we talk about, all means all. And I'm really just happy that we, and delighted that you get to support those students. And Crystal, I am looking forward to seeing you at graduation. You'll get a hearty handshake from me, and I know your parents are super proud. I think one of my favorite things are seeing the parents here with their kids, and as a father myself, it's just to be proud of your kid and where they're growing is really important. So congratulations to you and what you've accomplished.
Trustee Howard.
Thanks for the report. It's a really good one. It's always a pleasure to see you and to visit the school. There are a couple of things that really stood out to me in your presentation. You know, the, early on, you talked about a diploma, you know, and when you boil down everything that we do to its simplest terms and simplest equation, it's whether we can hand a student a diploma at the end of the year. And you said today, you're up to 92%, which is really phenomenal. I mean, that's a stunning increase in the number of students graduating, and that's fantastic. But you also have, you know, because we have lots of different students and we have lots of different ways, I'm happy to say that they can get a diploma. You also run the virtual academy up there. That's really great. And one we don't hear about much, the hospital school. I don't know whether you have many students in the hospital school now, but there are students that we need that hospital school for. So that's, all those are pretty amazing. So it's a great school, it's a beautiful campus, and everything about it's good. So thanks for all of that, and congratulations to Crystal and your parents.
Trustee Raymond.
Thank you. So on this idea of meeting kids where they are, it's like I'm a mom, and I've got two teenagers of my own, and I think one of the guiding principles, you know, for me as a mom, has always been to meet my kids where they are, but don't just leave them there, right? And that's obvious to me, like when we talk about the graduation rates having improved so much over the past few years, like obviously, you're meeting them where they are, but you're taking them somewhere, you know, and responding to their needs. And I just think that's really remarkable. Every time you present, I feel like your students are getting a sense of ownership over education that they probably have never felt before. And that, maybe that was the big difference between them being, you know, maybe not succeeding in a larger setting or a more traditional setting and really succeeding now. It's just really beautiful to see like that. I see Mom's nodding her head over here, and I am, I just, I just really love that. You know, clearly, you guys are responding to what you're seeing and not just saying, "Do it this way." It's like, "Let's see where you are, and let's see how we can help you move up." And I just, you know, I just, I know with my own kids, that's the only thing that ever works, right? It's like, "Let's start where you are and go from there." Crystal, congratulations so much on your growth as a student and as a person. I just wanted to say that every time I hear a young person talk about or referred to as someone who loves art and creating things, and that that's something they want to carry into the world as they grow up, I just feel really good about that. You know, we're in a world right now where we need more art than ever, you know? So don't let anything discourage you if that's truly what's pushing you forward. So that's really beautiful. And Mom and Dad, congratulations. I'm just like seeing so much pride in your faces. It's like making me want to cry a little bit. So, yeah, and thank you to all of you for being here.
Superintendent Resici.
Thank you. So I'm just going to say to Mr. Kahn, I had the chance this week to visit, and we had an amazing walk. You walk on the grounds of Redwood, and the school is warm and welcoming and energetic. We did have the students here last year as part of our leadership team and listening to student voice and really hearing what they had to share about the Redwood community. And here's some of the words that they used, "dedication, care, compassion, empathy, and high expectations." And the students said, "It feels like a family, and that's what we need." So I just want to congratulate you for continuing to do the work that you do. And then Ms. Crystal. Now, you just keep on doing what you're doing because it is working for you, and if you ever need some tasters, people that, you know, if you, if you want to, you know, just practice on us.
Cheese cake, right?
Say it again?
We all heard chicken parmigiana.
I heard, yeah, I heard cheesecake, I heard chicken parmigiana. So anytime you, you have 10 people up here that are willing to be your taste tester, just call us up and let us know. But, and as far as the art is concerned, we definitely need more people in this world who can be as creative as they possibly can be and innovative as they possibly can be. And so please keep that up because we need you. The future needs you. Thank you.
Okay, so Redwood High School, the school I used to work at before being on the school board, I'm not supposed to have any favorite schools, but, well, yeah. So as a special ed teacher, one of the things, of course, that you really work at is you know that all students learn in different ways. Redwood High School is the place for, where we can take a student and have them, have a place that's different and non-traditional. There are so many different schools and programs that run through Redwood, and each one of them has its own special place for different students that can be just right for that kid. And it's one of the reasons you can have this 92% graduation rate, because maybe the regular program isn't the right way, maybe it's the CVVA, or maybe it's the independent study, or maybe it's the Counseling and Rich Program, or maybe there's just, there's, even though it is a very small school, there's so much choice there. It's just amazing the amount of choice in such a small school. And it, it doesn't matter whether you're special ed or you're not special ed, you're general ed students, there's this other choice for you to graduate and, and not just graduate from school, but like in the case of Crystal, to excel in school and really feel welcomed and learn to love school like you did when you were probably in kindergarten and first grade, to learn to love school just again. And I love that comment that was in your particular thing that you changed challenge to opportunity. And I think challenge to opportunity is exactly what Redwood is, from challenge to opportunity. Thank you so much, Redwood. We are, let's see, is it break time here? Yep, that must be, oh, no, 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 we have, sorry, not quite, almost. We have student board member reports, superintendent report, then we'll have our recess. So our student board member, Scarlett Everson, will update us on what's going on with students in the district.
There's just a couple of fun events that have happened or that are happening. Creekside had their first dance of the year for their seventh and eighth graders, and the theme was Tokyo Twilight, and I heard very good reviews from the cheer team. They enjoyed it. And then Marshall, on September 24th, they had their Mustang meetup, which is a morning talk, and it's an opportunity for parents to talk with their principal and have coffee. And then Stanton had their movie night on September 19th. They watched the Minecraft movie, which I assume was a hit. They watched the Minecraft movie, which I assume was a hit. And then at the high school, we just had homecoming. We had a lot of participation from that, a lot of student involvement, which is always really fun to see. And we also got to host Mr. Kuziak as a judge, which is great. It was great to have him. Yeah, everyone's doing good right now.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. We will now go to our superintendent for the superintendent district's report.
Yes, good evening, board members and cabinet members and educational partners in the audience. I am excited to share a few things that have been going on in the district over the last and some of the things that I've been working on. We, I have been dedicatedly going to our PTAs, PTOs, parents' clubs, spas. We have different parent groups at all of our schools and they just do an amazing amount of work and support for students and staff. And so the ones that, the September visits were the four that are checked up on the screen. And in October, I'm looking forward to going to Creekside, Chabot and Jensen Ranch. And what I hear every time I go to these different meetings and have a conversation with, with the parents of each of the school communities is just the amazing amount of work and support that our, our parents contribute to our schools. And the schools would not be the same without that support. So just lots of appreciations and just amazement at the work that gets done and the partnership that takes place at our schools to make them better places for our students. Past activity events, we had our parent leadership council last, last week. And Director Doris Dela Torre, she led our Mariachi family orientation the other evening. And then yesterday, she doubled down and did a presentation to, a fabulous presentation to our Rotary on multilingual learners that happened yesterday. And then we did some celebrating with our former superintendent, Parvina Mahdi. At the, she received the exemplary Women in Education Award. And so that was up in Santa Rosa at the ACSO's Women's School Leadership. So that was a lot of fun. Suzie and I traveled up there. And then upcoming activities, we want to remind our parents and staff and students that we are going to have to create a board policy that limits or prohibits the use of smartphones or smartwatches by July 1st, 2026. So our goal is to clearly develop a policy that is compliant with the law, but also balances instructional integrity, student well-being and family partnership. So in view of that, we're going to start by gathering some feedback because we think that's the best way to start. So we will start this week to send out surveys, a thought exchange survey to our parents and our staff members, and then a Kelvin survey to our students. And so that will go out this week. We also are looking forward to tomorrow night where the Alameda County Office of Education is having the Teacher of the Year celebration and our representative Teacher of the Year is Nicoletta Dalby. So we're extremely looking forward to, I'm celebrating her at tomorrow night with a lot of other teachers across the county. And then as a lifelong leader, as a new superintendent, I am a, I believe deeply in continuing to build the capacity of the adults in our system in order to do the work well with students. And that includes myself as a new superintendent. So I'm participating in the ACSO New Superintendent Seminar Series. This past weekend was the first seminar. It will happen throughout the school year. And the focus this past weekend was on governance and value-based learning. So those are the other topics that will be covered throughout the year and I've already learned quite a bit. Or because we have so many good practices in place already, it really validated and affirmed some of the many things that we already do. And then last but not least, I wanted to give some acknowledgements. Yesterday, we had an incident at the Castro Valley High School and we had a bomb pit. And we wanted to say thank you to the dedicated Castro Valley High School staff for doing an amazing job of keeping our students safe. We also want to say a huge thank you to the Alameda County Sheriff's Office for continuing to partner with us and to help us partner up to ensure the safety of the Castro Valley High School students and staff. That partnership is incredibly important. And as a learning organization, we are always reflecting on yesterday's event so we can keep strengthening our practices. So we've been debriefing and looking at, what do we do really, really well and where are our areas to grow? That's what we do as a learning organization. So we will continue to do that in partnership with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. And we will also continue with our annual Alice training that we do every year. So we just wanted folks to know that that's work that we're doing and we want to make sure that we know, that everybody knows that the Castro Valley High School staff and the Alameda County Sheriff's Office did an amazing job yesterday in keeping our students safe. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. All right, now we are at recess. So we're going to take about five minutes. Let me take a look at the watch here. It says 6:36. So about 6:42 or so, we'll come back here. All right, let's take a little recess. If you have to go home to do homework and stuff, we do understand. But we will have some exciting stuff here on our consent agenda. All right, we're back from recess and we are at number eight, which would be California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. I see, yes, of course you were here. Connie Hill is here from CSEA. Come on up, Connie.
Good evening, Superintendent Rishichi and Board. We really have had a lot going on in our district, but oddly enough, not a whole lot to report on. As you know, last month, we talked about getting our new benefits language passed so that we could move forward with getting in with a system that will hopefully be able to provide us with more affordable healthcare in our school district. We have yet to come to a meeting with the district between our bargaining committee and the district, only because the benefits have taken up so much of our time trying to ensure that our members were educated and understood the meaning of change. And we are still not completely done with that, with the change. We will have a shorter period of time for open enrollment and change can be difficult, but our members are rising to the occasion. There was one thing I just wanted to kind of give a shout out to, Mr. Khan. I work at Redwood Continuation High School as a para educator and I absolutely love that campus. And Mr. Khan is an amazing principal, but I think it was an accident. We have one other program up at our site and I believe you worked in that program, Ms. Adams, and that is the Roy Johnson Program.
Yeah.
And the Roy Johnson Program is a program for adults with developmental delays. They are up there, I believe, until the age of 22. You, Coria, you were a teacher. You tell me, thank you.
I didn't actually work in that program, but I did have my students work with the kids in that program.
So, yes, sort of. And Mr. Khan did mention, we have like five programs up there.
Yeah.
Just wanted to give a little shout out to all Roy Johnson students and staff because the teachers and the para educators up there have one of the most difficult jobs and they are just some of the most amazing people, the students and the staff who work in that program. I just wanted to give them a little, a little recognition for that. But other than that, we are looking forward to getting back to the bargaining table with Castro Valley Unified and hopefully I'll have a little bit more news to share with you next month. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have Larissa Pulvado or her representative, maybe online? No? Okay, so we do not have a report from CVTA. We are at number nine, public comment for items not on the agenda. And I believe we have one person here, in person, Catherine Murray. You would have, you could come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Catherine Murray and I'm currently a student at CVHS. I'm a senior. And this is my little sister, Rachel Lee, and she's a freshman. And we're currently raising a guide dog. And before I start, I want to preface this by saying thank you to Dr. Megan Raster for your email earlier today. We've been trying to get Sutton in school at campus to next to finish training. And so he did reply to our email, but we're still here presenting this because this was present, and before we got that email. So yeah, nine months ago, I attended a seminar at Guide Dogs for the Blind and I heard a lady who is visually impaired speak about the ways her dog has been her constant companion and friend. Her dog has allowed her access to work, to hang out with friends, and has even saved her life multiple times. I had known about guide dogs before, but I had never realized the true independence that they are able to give someone and I wanted to join that mission. So I underwent over 40 hours of training in order to become a puppy raiser. And then I was handed a droopy-eyed yellow lab who has now become, seven-month-old, that you now see before you. His name is Sutton. Every day since receiving him, my family and I have worked through several training sessions throughout the day in order to make this guide dog hopefully successful. Recently, our Guide Dogs for the Blind club leader has noticed that Sutton knows the commands that are necessary for a guide dog. Sit, down, wait, let's go, not to bark, how to ignore distractions, and is mature enough for the next stage in his training, going to school with us. This skill is very important as many of people who need guide dogs attend either a six-to-eight hour job or are in an academic setting throughout the day. Initially bringing Sutton to school, we plan to only take him to one class. And then if Sutton is successful in that class, we will take him to more, two and then three, but only with the teacher's permission. If the board is able to give us permission to take Sutton to school with us, Guide Dogs for the Blind will be able to prove, to give them a certificate of insurance to guarantee that if something does happen, which we do not anticipate, Guide Dogs for the Blind will be able to repair the damage. Our hope in bringing Sutton to school is to not only teach him to be a better guide dog in the future, but also to bring inclusivity and accessibility awareness to CVHS. At CVHS, we have the acronym STAND, Safety, Togetherness, Aspire, Never Give Up, and Diversity, to instruct students on how to act on campus. Having this guide dog on our campus would be able to teach students more togetherness since it brings everyone a common goal in raising this guide dog. It would also bring more diversity and raising awareness for service dogs and the visually impaired community. For me, puppy raising is more than just breeding a dog. It is helping to revolutionize someone's life and to give them independence. I would love to continue on this path and I need the school board's help to allow Sutton to come to school. So I'm requesting that the school board would allow him to come to school and to complete his training to hopefully make him a better guide dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. We are now at the consent agenda, which is an action item. And I would ask for an emotion for the consent agenda.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Thank you very much. We will now have student board member Everson, preferential vote.
Yes.
Okay. And trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So that is 6-0. The consent agenda is passed. All righty then, we have now, we are at our reports, discussion and action items. Our first one is on enrollment and attendance overview for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you so much to the Board of Education. I'd like to-
I'd like to introduce Ms. Kristi Padilla, our Director of Student Services, who is a few months into the role, but she has worked hard to gather and learn, a few months into the role in our school district, rather. She has worked hard to gather information to be able to present to the board on some critical pieces of information to update the board, our community, our superintendent, our executive cabinet on enrollment as it currently stands and attendance as well. So, Ms. Padilla, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMaster. Good evening, Board President Adams, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Resici, Executive Cabinet members, staff, and educational partners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present tonight on my new journey into this role. I feel like I'm echoing, am I? Thank you. Talking. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to present on attendance and enrollment and give me the ability to look deeper into Castro Valley. We'll start with enrollment and looking at the state of California. Would like to provide just a brief overview of, in the state of California, for the last three years, we have been experiencing as a state declining enrollment and have lost approximately 85,000 students have left the state of California in the last three years. In comparison to Castro Valley, where we have been very fortunate in the last 10 years, it kind of breaks down into two different sections. So, pre-COVID, we were staying pretty consistent on our enrollment. Then came the pandemic, and everyone experienced the declining enrollment. Since the pandemic, we have been slowly recovering, anywhere from 100 to 200 students per year coming back or joining our district as new members of the community. In the last 10 years, it would be safe to say that this year, the 25-26 school year, is our highest number of students enrolled in the last 10. So with 9,719 students as of September 1st, that's the largest number we've seen. Looking at that a little bit further down, since I'm learning the elementary, middle, and high school levels, it was really eye opening for me to look at the breakdowns and the school sizes. So, other than Proctor and Jensen Ranch, all of our elementary schools now have TK through 5th grade. With about 4,400 students enrolled in TK through 5th grade, our middle school community, which is 6th through 8th grade, is now about 2,100 students. And our secondary or our high school, 9th through 12th, is about 3,066 students, the majority of them sitting at our comprehensive one school, high school of Castro Valley of 2,944 students. I'd like to point out that we also show Castro Valley Virtual, the CVVA program listed here, where we have 34 students who are full time in that program. But there are 287 students who are enrolled at Castro Valley for part of the time, Castro Valley High School. And they also attend one or some school classes at the CVVA program online. I almost turned off my mic instead of changing my screen. So, looking at the attendance, looking at the global view of the state level, and looking at what's chronic absenteeism, that is what places us on the dashboard every year. So, as chronic absenteeism can be defined, as a student who is 10% or greater chronically absent for the days enrolled that they attend the school. So if you have 180 days of school every year, which is our normal 180-day calendar, any absences of 18 or more would be considered a chronic absentee. And those absences are for excused or unexcused reasons. And I think that's a big shift for our community to understand that even qualified absences, like doctors' appointments, do go towards that chronic absentee number that we report to the state of California or that they report on us. So, again, prior to COVID, the state standard or state average was 12%. Then after we came back from COVID, we started at 30%. The goal of chronic absenteeism is to have a falling number every year, to get smaller and smaller. So, starting at 30% for the state, and currently, the last time they reported, which was the end of the 23-24 year, was 20% chronically absent. In comparison, looking at Castro Valley Unified's chronic absenteeism, you can see that prior to COVID, that we had a wonderful below state standard or state level of, excuse me, that was misspeak, below the state level, which was 4.4 and a half percent, where the state was 12% pre-COVID. Since COVID, our largest number was at 19%. We have had a gradual decline, which is good. We're going down in the right direction. And at the end of last year, we were at 11% chronic absenteeism. The goal is to keep that number going down. The more time our students are in school, we know the more successful, more opportunities they have. So, in the Student Services Department, we have had the wonderful opportunity, not only to have me as a new person up there, but also a lot of new people are up there. We have a department specialist, a social worker on special assignment, behavior prevention intervention, teacher on assignment, and a wellness center social worker who has increased their time at Canon, all for the purpose of working with our most at-risk population and populations, and also being able to provide that support so that they can be at school and remove the barriers so that they can be there every day and not have high attendance rates and improve that. Besides that, we have our ongoing staff trainings for our improvements of our Tier 1 and Tier 2 intervention programs, and of course, increasing our family engagement, because we know when our families are engaged in the campuses, their students are more engaged in those campuses. So, moving forward, looking at our chronically absent students, continuing to monitor them and report them out, and improving our attendance interventions and our positive behaviors, and also always looking at making sure that we can try to provide the most support for non-exclusionary discipline for our students. With that, short and quick, any questions that I can provide you? Answers, I mean, not questions, sorry.
Yeah, Trustee Raymond.
I just have one probably pretty quick question, it's just for clarification. When you were discussing the chronic absenteeism and you had the chart with the years, it looked like the pre-COVID years were down in the 4%-ish range, right? And then there was that huge jump. And you mentioned something about how now we also have to include the excused absences in calculating that rate? Was that a change in state law, and when did that happen?
That is not a change. It's always been. Chronic absenteeism includes excused and unexcused absences. Pre or post-COVID, there always been. That's part of what's chronic absenteeism.
Okay, I misunderstood. And so, I guess it looks like, you know, we've had this big jump, probably people, you know, just being more cautious about keeping kids home when they're sick, is my guess. And it's interesting to see how, you know, it will be interesting to see how the interventions that you then discussed, how those may help.
I agree.
Thank you.
Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, I was thinking about TK enrollment, and, you know, a few years ago, I was thinking as that was going universal, how as we were seeing declining enrollment, if anything, that would maybe mask real declining enrollment? But it doesn't seem like that's happening with us, right? We're not only expanding a grade, we're also seeing a natural increase in our school age population. Do we have a sense of what our TK, is everyone taking advantage of the opportunity for TK? Probably not. You know, are we, do we have a sense of like 80% of people who could take it, do it, or 90%?
Right now, sir, I wouldn't be able to
No worries.
to say if that's true or not.
I could, I mean, I could probably just chime in, Trustee Kuziak, to say that, you know, our average class sizes, you know, if we go all the way up to 12th grade, you know, are in the range of 600, maybe 650, 700 students, just depending on if they're a bubble or not. So we know that this has been the first year where a full, a full, it was 364 days of birthdays are eligible for TK enrollment. It had never been that before, you know? Prior to universal TK, it was a two-month short window that students were eligible for the program. So our TK enrollment has increased, but it doesn't mirror what the full class size enrollment is. So I think the short answer is no, not every family, probably in the community is accessing TK. But we certainly are always preparing ourselves for if that enrollment were to start to match other grade levels.
And I'm assuming we also still see probably somewhat of a dip between kindergarten and first grade still. Kindergarten is not optional in California. It's required now, right?
Impulsory attendance is six years old.
Six, yeah, it's based on the age, yeah.
Five, yeah, so there are, there are definitely some small percentage of families that don't enroll right at kindergarten or right at TK.
Got it. With regards to, during COVID, we were talking about something other than ADA. Are those conversations still in place, looking at more of an enrollment as a way to reimburse districts versus ADA? Is that still in conversation, average daily attendance?
So, Portman Kuziak, are you talking about ADA versus enrollment? Like how our funding is based? Those conversations happening?
Yeah, and if that's still sort of like, I thought there was sort of like a hybrid approach at some point that they were considering?
Yes, that was a conversation that a couple of years ago. It's died down since. Yeah, I haven't heard anything. I know it was a really big deal at that time because of the attendance across California, the decline in attendance. But lately, I haven't really heard anything. It has not been talked about with any proposals or anything about moving towards enrollment versus ADA.
And I shouldn't be talking, given my sniffles, but I'm wondering if we are moving away, particularly the elementary level, of not having perfect attendance awards? Because if anything, in this sort of post-COVID era, it seems like a bad message about, I'm just, that's not direction from the board. That's Michael Kuziak's personal opinion, like that that's probably not a good public policy if you want to teach kids about, you know?
Well, and Trustee Kuziak, in acknowledgement that we went through, you know, a pandemic where our culture around, you know, it used to be come to school no matter what. We'll tell you if you're too sick to be here. And it really became protect people and stay home and be responsible. And so, many practices have shifted, and so inclusive of what you just outlined. We've had to, we've had to shift and be very, you know, reasonable about when absences are appropriate and when we really want to see kids at school, so.
Trustee Howard.
This is a slightly different question, but what is our ADA rate right now? Because you showed some big numbers there for the chronic absentees. Those aren't, Suzie, you probably know that.
Yes, as of 24-25, our ADA rate went up to 95.28%. And so
Better, because I remember pre-COVID, we were always up in the 96, 97%.
We're growing. I mean, every single year since COVID, we know we've seen a dip of 90, about 93%. Now we're at 95.28, so every year we're seeing an increase.
It's a better number, but nevertheless, I have to say, with the last two years, 11% and 19% chronic, those are, for Castro Valley, those are astronomical numbers from our tradition. So that's worrisome.
And I would like to say that, you know, there's a lot of hard work that like went into having those numbers continue to decrease. I don't know if the board remembers, but at one point, we were in differentiated assistance, and we had a few schools that were specifically working on very targeted plans of action to reduce their chronic absenteeism rate. And so, again, we're going in the right direction. We know we have to continue to do that work. And so, the schools have kept those plans in place in their SIPSAs and their single plans for student achievement. And so we'll keep working on it. We, our aim is to continue to decrease until we get back to those single digits. But we are headed in the right direction, and we continue, we will continue to do that.
Trustee Kuziak.
So, when you look at the population of students who have a high rate of absenteeism, is it sort of clustered where it's a smaller set of students that are having the chronic absenteeism? Or, does that make any sense, rather than?
Well, I think, you know, just to note again, a chronically absent student has been absent for 10% or more of a school year. Once they're counted in that, whether their attendance rate is 89.9% or, you know, 65%, they're still, they still count as one. So that rate that we're seeing is a percentage of the overall students that fall in the category of chronically absent. And one thing I just, I think it would add that's really important is, you know, we are combating this at the same time that there have been additions to what absences can be approved, the length of time, et cetera. So it's, you know, it is, it is, it is much more complicated. And there's a spectrum of students, I just want to name that. There's a spectrum of students in the realm of chronically absent. So we're obviously focusing on the subset for which there might be school avoidance. There might be barriers that we actually can assist with. We're not, we're not talking about the students that maybe are dealing with chronic illness or other things going on.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, just to add on to that, I mean, it's 10% or 11% of, that's 11th percent of 9,000, that's 900 students. That's a big number.
Big number. Yeah. From a teacher perspective, and having taught counseling enriched, a lot of the kids that I had had problems with chronic absenteeism. And a lot of it was from either depression, anxiety, some school phobia. Many of these types of things that were, that the school district was constantly really working on, getting people therapy, getting students maybe bus or transportation, and figuring out different ways to make the student feel comfortable and make them feel welcome to be able to go to school. One of those things was is being in a, you know, a smaller environment over there in Redwood, in a small classroom. That really kind of helped quite a bit where it wasn't as, it wasn't as difficult really to be there. So, and, you know, the beautiful redwood trees and all of that sort of thing, you know? It was a very calming environment. So, this district, as far as I know, has always really tried to really work with kids to work on absenteeism. And I really think, you know, how could you teach, you can't teach a kid, you can't do anything for them if they aren't there. So, you know, all of our great programs and all of the wonderful things we have can't happen unless we can have them in the classroom. So, working on this and seeing this presentation and continuing to work on this is extremely important. And I'm so glad to see this presentation and that CVUSD continues to work on this and gets those numbers down. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, and so you get to hear my voice some more.
Significant disproportionality presentation by Nick McMaster.
Put in mouth. Thank you, President Adams. I'd like to welcome up now some more members of our Educational Services Department, our Directors of Elementary and Secondary Education, respectfully, Ms. Afie Sklute, Ms. April Wong. And they are going to provide you, they're going to attempt to consolidate into a short presentation the months and months of work that have already gone into, are very focused and intentional work to be responsive to, to an issue that's presented itself, one that we're very, very focused on correcting. And so, they're going to present to the board, the community, Superintendent Resici, and the rest of the executive cabinet about what is significant disproportionality.
Great, thank you, Mr. McMaster, and good evening, members of the board and our governance team, and then the folks in the audience. Thanks for being here. So we're going to start by talking about what is disproportionality. In this context, disproportionality refers to the over or underrepresentation of a racial or ethnic group in one of four areas. When a district is disproportionate for three consecutive years in any one group in any of the four areas listed above, then they are found to be significantly disproportionate. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires requires districts to address disproportionality related to special education. So what does that mean for Castro Valley Unified? Castro Valley Unified School District is in significant disproportionality due to three years of overqualifying Black or African-American students for special education under the disability of other health impairment. The other health impairment category is based on limitations due to acute health conditions that adversely affect educational performance. The other health impairment category is most oftenly, most oftenly, most commonly associated with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder or ADHD. It's also important to note that we saw one year of disproportionality in the area of suspensions for Black or African-American students in special education in the 23, 24 school year. However, we can confidently say that we are interrupting that trend based on the 24, 25-year school year data. So we are not doing this work alone. We attend technical assistance workshops provided by the Napa County Office of Education. And we partnered with Dr. Brown Consultancy Group. Additionally, 76 LEAs in California were newly identified as being in significant disproportionality in 2025. That being said, our team really sees the determination as an opportunity to figure out why, why we're in significant disproportionality so that we can refine systems and practices to produce better outcomes for all of our students with a special focus on our African-American and Black students. So the finding out why or the figuring out why started with a data collection and analysis that included looking at quantitative and qualitative data. Some of our quantitative data included looking at suspensions, chronic absenteeism and ESBC proficiency. And then our qualitative data collection involved holding or doing policy and handbook reviews, holding empathy interviews with site and district administrators, and also hosting focus groups, separate focus groups with parents, special education teachers and general education teachers. We've also formed an educational partners team that's made up of site and district administrators, teachers, parents of Black or African-American students and community representatives. And this diverse representation allows for multiple perspectives to ensure that the needs of students and families are addressed in our plan. And now I'm going to hand it off to Ms. April, who will talk about identifying our root causes.
Thank you, good evening. So these four root causes that you see here are really identified based on that comprehensive data analysis process. And you saw that highlighted in a previous slide. And that while being a very high-level summary or snapshot of the work represents weeks of data review and information gathering and a really thoughtful and intentional analysis of all of that information to really identify what the root causes were that were causing this disproportionate outcome. And what you see here are four root cause areas in the areas of interventions and MTSS practices, culturally responsive instruction, establishing safe environments and building community with our families and students, as well as alternatives to suspension and other means of correction. And the theme across these four root causes that you can see here is an inconsistency. So while there's awareness and there are practices that are happening, that systemization of all of these areas within our program is really where we need to focus our work. And so from these root causes, distilling that down into a theory of action, because while those root causes are grounded in really deficit language, we see that challenge as an opportunity to focus on a theory of action that will drive our work and really focus as a mission statement of sorts. And it's an if-then statement. I'll read it for you here. If we implement a consistent district-wide MTSS that incorporates culturally responsive practices and non-exclusionary discipline, then we will create safe, inclusive and bias-resistant learning environments, which will enable staff to support Black or African-American students and their families, strengthening community partnerships, decreasing inappropriate special education referrals, and ensuring that all students can reach their full potential academically, socially and emotionally. And so from that theory of action driving our work, we've now identified those four key areas. And you can see that relation, that through line from our root causes. So focus on areas of refinement and ways to ensure that we're looking at our systems through a lens of fidelity and accountability. And so with a focus on our multi-tiered systems of support, really honing in on those tier-two interventions, what that looks like, and then making sure we're systematizing that so that we can guarantee that for every student in every classroom across all of our sites on our campuses, that they have opportunities to experience that. So looking at the MTSS is one area as well as looking at our culturally responsive instructional practices, expanding the use of alternatives to exclusionary discipline, and of course, building stronger partnerships with our families and community. It's that process of identifying these areas. And the next steps of our plan are really drilling down into the measurable outcomes that are going to be grounded in data. And then also the accountability measures to ensure that what we're planning to do is happening. So the next step summarized here, we will be writing and completing the actual compliance and improvement monitoring plan, the significant disproportionality plan. We're pleased to share out that we've submitted step two and that was approved. And so we're moving on to the step-three activities of identifying the plan itself. And that's going to incorporate best practices as well as professional learning. And we'll continue to reconvene our educational partners group to get that feedback and input as well as continue to keep you updated throughout the process. Finally, an important note on the IDEA parameters. We are required to set aside 15% of our federal IDEA funding in order to fund these activities and this plan. And so I just want to make clear there's no additional funding for this, but we are identifying the set-aside funds to build out this plan to interrupt disproportionality. And so on behalf of all of our team, we feel a sense of urgency. We have a clear direction and wanted to provide this update to you. So thank you.
Trustee Kuziak?
I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing here. And I read through this a few times and I, I'm still struggling on one thing. Here in, I asked in the board packet about this as well. And I just want to say this out loud so I can learn and be better and understand. I understand the concern about disproportionality when it comes to discipline. So like, that's off the table. Like, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. Having gone through the process of having a student where your child has a medical diagnosis, whether it's ADHD, whether it's some type of neurodivergency, right? I get confused where, why would we somehow be upset? Why would we, why would we be called disproportionate if by virtue of how that kid's medical records state that kid is, that somehow that leads to a certain population to be overrepresented? Does that make sense? Am I making any sense? Okay, I make sense, okay. And like, that's where I'm really struggling here. Like, the individual need for service versus a really fantastic societal goal that we want any population to be aligned with the overall. We want an even distribution, if you will. So can you talk to that? Help me.
So let me start and then the rest of the team, please join in. Here's what I would say. First of all, it's a state-level designation, right? And so they've looked at our data and said that, you know, we, three years in a row, we hit this mark. And Mr. McMaster can talk about the calculation better than I can. But, but the state uses like, if you hit this mark three, at level three, three consecutive years in a row, you are designated as disproportionality. What we have found, and I know that both April and Afi spoke to, the data analysis piece unpacked, and we did this for months, not weeks, but months of data analysis, looking at all of those different bases, both the quantitative and the qualitative. And what we found, I'll just use one of the examples of, one of, one of the things we unearthed is that as far as interventions are concerned, we were not thoroughly intervening, using all the tricks in our bag instructional part, right? Before we jumped to, no, just refer the student to special ed, get them assessed and get them in. And so what, one of the things that we have to do is make sure that we are thoroughly intervening all of those wonderful tools that our teachers use before we go there. And, and a part of our data analysis said we weren't doing that. The system said, we are not doing that systematically. In some places, we are, in some places, we're not. And so in our system, district-wide, at elementary, middle and high, we have very good practices in place. In other places, we're inconsistent. And so we need to get to a system place where across the board, we can say, before we refer to special ed for assessment, we better be able to say we have a very clear path of what we did, what we put in place for that student as far as supports, before we jumped to special ed referral, assess and get into special ed designation.
Follow-up on that? So what does it mean to thoroughly intervene then? Like, what if you're like dealing with a crisis? Or from a parent's, I gotta say, from a special education parent point of view, you oftentimes feel like, do something, help. And I, this is important that we have culturally responsive practices and that we're using our multi-tiered systems of support to do the right thing by our kids. But when do we sort of say, you know what? Maybe we don't have the systems in place right now. This is clearly a crisis or something like that. Like, how do we, what does that look like? To sort of say that we've thoroughly done it?
And I would like Mrs. Sklute to talk about from an, give an elementary example of what that looks like.
Yeah, so, so behavior shouldn't drive placement in special education. We really look at academic deficits, right? And so part of that, for example, I'll speak to elementary, is that we need to exhaust all, everything in a general education setting before we put kids into special education because we want students in the least restrictive environment. So that being said, for example, in elementary schools, we have three tiers or everywhere, we have three tiers of support for academic support, right? The first tier is what every teacher provides to every student. It's good teaching of essential skills to everyone in the class. And that includes differentiation. Tier three is special education or RTI support. It's remediation. Tier three is remediation. What we haven't been doing as consistently as we could is the tier-two intervention, which is reteaching of essential skills, of grade-level essential skills. So there are students who need remediation, but there's also students who need the reteaching of grade-level essential skills. And that is where in elementary, for example, we need to make it more robust.
Can I just add in? I want to take the opportunity to make sure we can be really clear that this, this, this observation, this data that's coming forward, for one, the calculation, it's comparative data. So it's not just a disproportionality based on enrollment of students and outcomes of that particular group. It's a pretty complicated calculation. And what it's, what it's actually demonstrating is that in our population of students in special education under the category of other health impairment is that our Black or African-American students are overwhelmingly, they're three times or more qualified for other health impairment than other, all other student groups. So it's, it's a little bit more specific than that. And I think the most important point to be said here is that we are focusing on disrupting the subset of students who qualify for special education that are deemed potentially inappropriate, inappropriate qualifications. Not students that are appropriate. We're not sitting here saying the goal is just to reduce it at all costs because there are students, it's definitely appropriate for them to be receiving specialized services. It's really, we're operating with the belief that we have opportunity. And we saw that through file review, like we can do more. And I just want to say, because sometimes, you know, I think from a viewpoint, coming from a family, you know, with brothers with disabilities, is that, well, we're going to get more resources. We're going to get more resources, why wouldn't we want that? And when it's appropriate, that's the conversation. When it's maybe not appropriate, you know, the consequence for a student in special education that shouldn't be in special education is less choice, even if they're in a resource class, they're, they're in less situations comparative to peers. And we think about a lot of our students come to school to pursue interests. And, you know, that could result in opportunity for class of interest to be reduced. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot to it, but I wanted to lift up those two pieces in response.
So we have a number of board members want to make some questions or comments. So we'll go with Trustee Raymond and then Trustee Howard and then Trustee Whitaker, okay?
These are probably very quick. I, I got kind of like gravitated towards the idea of an empathy interview. Could you, would you mind taking just a moment and sharing a little bit about what that is and what you guys got out of that?
So yeah, so it doesn't, it isn't necessarily, it isn't necessarily what it sounds like. It's really asking about administrators, about systems, about policies, if we have them, how well they're implemented, if other staff know about the policies.
And if I could add in, so at the beginning slides, would you go back to the beginning slides where you mentioned Dr. Mildred Brown?
Yeah.
There we go. So one of, one of the things that every school district that becomes newly identified as significantly disproportionate is they are supposed to hire a consultant, right? That helps them, a technical assistance person or a group, organization that helps to do this work. And so some of the data analysis that we have to do is they call them empathy interviews. And what Mrs. Sklute is saying is that, so, so one of the things that they did with us is they told us, okay, so how, we want to talk to both district office and site administrators about your systems and ask them, like, do these systems exist? Do these, does an RTI handbook exist? Do, are your policies updated in this way? And do you know about MTSS? Yes, we know about MTSS. Is it, is it across the board implemented to fidelity? You know, let's, we could give you a little bit more information there, perhaps, you know, at some schools, but not other schools. So those, they, the name of empathy interview may not be the best word or name that they use, but that's the name that the state uses as far as empathy interviews. And it really is the technical assistance part. That's part of, one of their pieces of work that they do with us is we give them the names of the administrators that they're going to interview and they conduct the empathy.
An interesting term. It sounds like it's kind of about, okay, what is the capacity to respond to different needs?
And how consistent are you doing these practices? Or do you have these handbooks or policies updated, et cetera? So it really is kind of some across-the-board information.
And then my, thank you. And my second question is, because I know we've had presentations about significant disproportionality in the past couple of years, which is probably why we're now here. I guess my question about that is, like, have our rates gotten worse? Are they, are we starting to see some improvement? But the state is like, well, you're still not where you need to be. So now we are clearly labeling you as SD. I'm just curious, kind of where are we in terms of our efforts to kind of?
So let me start and then you all add into the mix. So, so the last time we were presenting on significant disproportionality, we were talking about a different student group. We were in significant disproportionality for emotionally disturbed ED for white students. So that was our previous designation. We made a plan. We didn't actually have as many months of data analysis that we've had this round, but last round, we did do data analysis and we put together a plan and that plan worked. We actually were out. We moved out of significant disproportionality for the student group of white students under the special ed group of emotionally disturbed. Fast forward, two years later, we then jumped back into significant disproportionality for this student group of African-American students, specifically for OHI. So different student groups, different categories. So we, when we put, what's? When, sorry, when there is, what, the plans that we've been able to put together have actually had impact. And so we think that the, we think that we will be able to do that again and get out of significant disproportionality period and hopefully stay out. And it really is, it's, we're, as both Sklute and Ms. Wong were saying, we're looking at this as an opportunity. It's unpacked, we have unpacked so much data and it's given us some really clear direction of, here's what you need to do in order to get really consistent in your practices to do better by Black kids and that are in this particular category. And so that's the work that is going to be done.
It sounds like, I mean, it sounds like there are probably a lot of opportunities to take from that previous experience. And obviously, we're talking about. And obviously, we're talking about different.
Student groups.
Student groups. So obviously, nothing is ever a one size fits all. I'm not even trying to suggest that it is. But it's, uh, there's probably a lot that can be gleaned, you know, from that experience.
Trustee Whitaker.
You didn't raise your hand? Oh.
I did, but Gary was first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary. Trustee, I'm sorry, you were next, you were next, trustee Howard.
I'm writing this down, by the way.
Sorry, so sorry.
You know, I just, this is, I'm gonna be, be brief here and I just wanna go back to one thing that Afi started here with and that you touched on just a second ago. And that is, I think, you know, we periodically bump into these things like this and there are problems. And the thing that I think is a, one of the great strengths of Castro Valley Unified is that we don't sweep these out of the rug. That they are, the, the finding is embraced and then run to ground. And I, I, I know for a fact that's not true in all districts. And I think that's where they get into a lot of trouble. And then I was gonna bring up, but you beat me to the punch, that this is not our first rodeo here. We did have one and it was around white students and their mental health and so forth. And I have to say, I just mentioned this to Mike a minute ago, that there is a concept in statistics called the curse of small numbers. And that, and I don't know how this is calculated. I don't know the formula at the state level, but I wonder if this is gonna curse us just by a, a little bit here. So I don't know whether we're a little bit out of whack or a lot out of whack or, or whatever. But the fact that we're bouncing from one to another makes me wonder. That doesn't make me think that we shouldn't pursue what's, what we're finding here. But I think we also ought to keep in mind, at least keep in some context and so forth. But thanks for all the hard work that you're doing. And I, I think that's really good.
Okay, now trustee Whitaker.
Thank you. I think, I mean, to Gary's point, and also, Michael, to your point. I think for me, when I think about this work, it's, first of all, there's different root causes, right? And it's getting to the root cause. But first you have to understand that a particular group, when we talk about disproportionality in statistics, it's outside. That means there's something that isn't working. So how are we being really honest with ourselves that a particular group is, something's going on? And this is us being just completely open and saying, hey, we realize that these numbers are saying that something that we're doing in our system isn't working and we need to help our kids and we need to specifically have a plan to understand that root cause. But I'm, but what I'm saying is, is that I'm appreciative that we are open about it and that we recognize that we do have an issue and that, you know, really, we're doing the right thing. And, and I appreciate that we're looking at the data and I appreciate that we're combing through and, and finding out ways and testing out and building out plans. Because, you know, that's the work we need to do here. So that's my feedback.
Okay, I wanted to just make a couple of comments on this, not really questions, but I'm really glad that we're working on this disproportionality because I'm hoping in general, it will help our Black or African-American families just do better. Not all ADHD kids are special ed kids. That's really the, the bottom line of this. They could maybe just need a 504 or they might not even need any of that. It might be able to be resolved, you know? It, it might just be that, you know, people are over identifying those kids as moving around too much and they're not identifying other kids as moving around too much, little kids, right? Little boys, right? So, and, you know, little boys do like to be active. Sure they do, you know? Anybody who's had a, a son, I've had a son, they like to be active. So, and, and girls too. But, and I think, I, I believe this one, is this boys and girls? By the way, this, this thing, it is boys and girls. Okay, all right. But, but yeah, our ADHD, somebody having ADHD doesn't mean that they're special ed, doesn't mean that they have to have a 504 plan. It does mean that there are other things that we can do to help them be very successful in school and use all that extra energy in a good, in positive way. Okay. All right. We are, we have done that and we are gonna now go on to, thank you very much for that presentation. And we are gonna go to 11C, public hearing, assurance of sufficiency of instructional materials. This, I have to call this in. And if, are there any comments on this? No, there are no comments on the instructional materials. So we will go to 11D, close out. Okay. And then adopting resolution 142526, assurance of sufficiency of instructional materials. This is something that Castro Valley has always been able to provide that I know of.
I will move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And starting with student board member Everson?
Yes.
Yes, and trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
And trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
I will also vote yes, that makes six zero. And of course, then that will pass. We now have our personnel report and I would like to have a motion to approve that.
I'd like to move that we approve the personnel report.
I will second.
A second, okay. And I'm gonna start with trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
And trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Raymond?
Yeah.
And I will also vote yes, that makes five zero on the personnel report. We are up to board member comments and reports. Would you have anything else you'd like to add?
I wanted to touch on what happened at the high school yesterday, just a little bit. From a student's perspective, I know the news is really scary right now. And like, obviously, like, we've talked about this at the past two meetings consecutively of these violent things happening at school. And I wanted to, like, put awareness to how fast the response was and that that was like a very good feeling of how fast we were evacuated from our classrooms up to the field and how fast, like, that message was sent throughout the school of like, we need to get somewhere safe. And we do drills and stuff and people pay attention during those times, but you never know how students are gonna react when it's the real deal. And so I just wanted to say that it was a reassuring feeling that the message was communicated so efficiently. And I feel like that was a good sign.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Whitaker?
I have not represented the board, but I do wanna thank you all for your grace tonight, dealing with my jet lag. Really appreciate it.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes, I did a few things. I was at the special education parent advisory committee. It's a committee, right? It was well attended. It was, I think, about thirteen or fourteen family, parents and guardians who were there. I, I couldn't stay that long, but I just, it, it was, it wore my heart to just see that so many people were there. I'm looking forward to when they will be having the barbecue. I didn't get when that will be, but I was really happy to see that enthusiasm there. I also spent some time with the parent leadership council and it's just always wonderful when, when parents do step up and parents and guardians take under their, their wings this idea of building community. I do wanna, again, make a shout out to Marshall, where I think they've done some great community building there with their PTA. And I'm looking forward just to getting to know what they're doing because I think that could be a best practice for some other, other communities because they've, I think they are over 250 family memberships now for their PTA. That's, that's amazing to hear. I did note that, speaking of, of, of schools, like Indy did their fun run. They raised like $79,000 or something. That's a lot of money. So there, there's certainly a market to raise money for our schools. Wanted to also say how much I appreciated to be at the high school for homecoming. My picture's on the front page of a principal Fortenberry that I took and I'm actually quoted there. That was a lot of fun. I, I don't know Scarlett, if you are aware of the show Gilligan's Island, but there's this song about a three-hour tour. I thought I was going to be there for an hour and a half. I was there for three and a half hours. It was a, it was an absolute trip. I, at one point, I thought I was hallucinating when I saw a kid dressed up as a monkey on another kid's shoulder. And I'm like, I have no idea what this is about, but I'm, I'm just, I'm here for the moment. It was a lot of fun just to see the school spirit, even from our youngest Trojans there. So I really, 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 really liked that. I really appreciate as a district, you know, as a parent yesterday, I was really impressed with the communication. Like, it felt different, it felt crisp, it felt, it felt, it was the right amount of information and the right cadence while this is going down. As a parent, you're freaking out a little bit. I think in the same way that the district is going to reflect on how we can do better and I really, I like that about this culture. The culture of our district is one where we always reflect, even when we're doing well, on how we can do better. I would challenge parents and guardians out there and social media sites that purports that they are news sites to reflect on how they do. It's not appropriate to show pictures of where we have evacuated students. It is really inappropriate and fear mongering if you post a picture of a gunshot and say, there's a bomb, bomb threat at a school. I say this every time when we go to parents' meetings. I think that a lot of our parents and guardians need to step away from the keyboard. They don't need to do a lifetime reenactment of what their kids are texting them, what they're speculating about, or, or thinking how they could do a better safety thing in a moment of crisis or potential crisis. And the way that things really played out yesterday, I really appreciated how everyone kept their, 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 in the district, kept their, their calm. So, but I think as a community, we need to do better because had this been a real emergency, there's just the, the amount of misinformation that can, can go out quickly. So I, I challenge all of us to think about how we engage in those moments. I do wanna make a shout out to the special education community. I know it's been a challenging week or so with some comments made by leadership in our country, particularly with about the origins of autism and how it should be treatable and how, how acetaminophen, if you can pronounce that word, has something to do with it. It's really terrifying when your child faces a diagnosis, a medical diagnosis and you're looking for support and help and to have a very unscientific conjecture being used to sort of sweep it away and to try to, to, to give a reason for it is really disturbing. And I know it's very triggering for a lot of our special education families, family and friends of mine whose children are autistic, neurodivergent, just to hear some of the rhetoric out there. And our kids deserve better than that. And as far as I'm concerned, I, I, I just, I, it's very disheartening. So I'll just leave it at that and I'm going to go home and take some NyQuil. Thanks.
Trustee Howard?
I just say, first of all, thanks for that comment on social media. I agree totally on that. That's, uh, social media is a curse on the world right now, I think. And I would like, like to mention one other thing about the homecoming and that is one that probably nobody would know and it wasn't in the paper, I don't think, today, but the grand marshal of the parade was Cliff Sherwood. And I doubt that very many people actually know that much about Cliff. But I'll mention two things that he did that are related to the schools back in about 1990 or the late eighties or something like that. The whole school system in Castro Valley was reorganized. Schools were closed, properties were sold. And the arrangement with schools that we have now that's, we have neighborhood schools that are positioned brilliantly in the community. And the head of that committee that did that, all that planning was Cliff Sherwood. And the thing he did more recently for the school system was that he was instrumental in our getting the medical clinic at the high school with Tiberseio Vasquez. We lost a number of partners and then Cliff made it possible for us to get that deal done. So congratulations to Cliff and I'm glad the high school chose him this year. I only have two things to mention quickly. One is I was at the Stanton Parent Club meeting with NIA and that was a very good evening. They had good attendance and they also had a lot of questions about the possibility of a bond and what happened with measure, measure, I mean, measure G. Measure I was the other one. Yeah. Measure G. And I was thinking, you know, they're all pretty much elementary school parents and it probably happened before they came to us and so forth. So, but it was a very good discussion and a lot of enthusiasm about, about that. The second thing was that I was able to tour play CV's activities at Chabot School last week. And it's always fun to see them. I'm always amazed at the program that they've built literally from nothing. And they have over, I think, over 900 students this year, which is pretty amazing. So thanks to them. That's all I have, thank you.
Trustee Raymond?
So I'm trying to remember if these things happened before. After the last board meeting, we were here, that I, I do know that our pinch headed for trustee Kuziak for Palomaros about a week ago, that was a nice, a, a, a nice surprise for me because I like going up to Palomaros and, and, and seeing that, that community up there and that school. And I can't remember if we did, went to Canyon before the last board meeting or after, but Canyon was also a nice experience to be up there. I also can't remember if Fall Festival was before or after. Anyway, in any event, those are the places I've been. I do wanna say thank you to Scarlett for sharing your student perspective on what happened yesterday. I heard it from my own kids who are students, of course, but I think especially in a public forum such as this, it's, this is a, I mean, it's always important to have student voice. This is particularly important, I think, to hear a student voice. So thank you for sharing that with us. And I'm just gonna, I just wanna echo trustee Kuziak's sentiments as a parent. I felt that the communication was, you know, it was rapid, it was concise, yet it left me feeling like I, like things were under control in a way that I have not felt in the past when I've received these messages from the parent. Cause this is not the first time that my oldest has been through an evacuation slash lockdown experience at the high school. And it was a much different experience as a parent. So, so yeah, I just, I, I feel like, thank you for that, you know, to you and to the team at the high school and everybody who, who was part of that. And I think that's all I got for now.
All right. I don't think I have actually, in the past two weeks, represented the board. I do wanna thank trustee Howard for filling in for me for Stanton. That was, had been on my agenda. Thank you so much for doing that so that I could go to an activity with my daughter. So thank you very much on that. And any other comments? No? Okay, with that then, we are going to adjourn.